Thank you for coming out. And as I said, we're running on pretty loose format here and just try to make it work. The main thing is this is an opportunity for me to share with you what's been going on in Austin for the last six or seven months. But more important than that, it's an opportunity for you to share with me what you think you would like to see us working on, what concerns you have for Bowie County, for Northeast Texas, and what we can do to be of service to you. My office, we're happy to be celebrating the grand opening of the office here in the courthouse. And I want you to know that office stands ready to be of service to you guys here in Bowie County and throughout House District 1, throughout Northeast Texas. So I'm just excited to have that opportunity to serve. And that's really what this day is all about, is being able to provide good service to those of you who elected me, who I represent in Austin. So I want to begin by making a few introductions and just saying a few thank yous. First of all, I want to introduce my wife. There she is. And I appreciate her being here and just everything that she has put into this. This is truly a team effort and just sacrifices that she has made to allow me to be able to go to Austin and serve you. So I thank her for that. Also, I want to introduce Trish Ponrad. Trish is sitting right back here. She is Chief of Staff in our office. She actually works in the Austin office. And she is here today and will be here through tomorrow here in the district, helping us get up and running and helping to, again, just provide service to our constituents. So I appreciate Trish and all that she has been able to do for us and for you. And then Bart Roth is right over here. Bart, many of you probably know him. He's a New Boston boy and graduated from New Boston School. And he is working in our office here in the courthouse. If you call this office, more than likely Bart and you'll be talking to here. And so I'm very happy to have him on staff here. And I have other staff members in Austin who will be in the district later and hopefully we can get around and meet you, have them meet you later on when they come up to the district. Courthouse staff, Judge Carlo, thank you so much for all you've done to help us get set up and allowing us in the courthouse. Judge Carlo and the commissioners, I appreciate everything you guys have done on our behalf. And of course, Deborah Land, wherever you are, if you're still here, thank you. You know, she was just exceptional as we were getting everything set up. And Shannon Bridget and Mickey Poff, I don't know if they're still here or not, but man, they have just done a wonderful job of getting our office ready to go and getting this set up. And I just thank them so much for all they've done. So again, it's just so good to be so welcome here in the courthouse and we're excited. So I want to kind of give you a wrap up of the session. And I'm not going to take a lot of time. I know many of you are standing and you've probably been standing all day and you're tired and ready to go home. And I don't want to take any more time than we need to, but I do want to take a little time to kind of give you my perspective of some things that happened. And then again, hear from you. There were 11,356 pieces of legislation that were introduced in this last session. That's House bills, Senate bills, joint resolutions, concurrent resolutions, and then simple resolutions. It's a lot of paperwork, a lot of ideas that people have come up with that are filed. 6,083 pieces of legislation actually passed. This is actually up 3% from 2013, from the last session. Forty-four items were vetoed by the government. Thirty-four of those were House bills, 9% bills, and one was a House concurrent resolution. The House joint resolutions and Senate joint resolutions that you may have heard about, those are actually going to be on ballot in November. There are seven of those, and you'll have an opportunity to express your thoughts on those in November. We have a newsletter coming out in a few weeks, so that is going to give you some information on those constitutional amendment proposals. And hopefully that will help you educate yourself and be able to cast your vote, form your opinion and cast your vote on those constitutional amendments. Again, there are seven of those. They range, I can't list all of them from memory, but they range everything from transportation funding to home set exemption increase to constitutional right to hunt and fish. So can't get much more Texan than that. And so you'll have an opportunity to vote on those in November. I do want to remind you that in order to vote on those, you have to be registered to vote by October 5th. And so if you are not registered, I encourage you to get registered to vote so that you can participate in this very important process. If you have friends or family who are not registered, I encourage you to encourage them to get registered. The big thing every session is the budget. We passed what I would think and what most people would consider to be a prudent and conservative, fiscally sound budget. If we are a pay-as-you-go state, we are required to pass a balanced budget, and that is a good thing. Some people up in the Northeast could take a lesson from that. I wish they would. But we are a pay-as-you-go state, and we're limited by a spending cap on what our budget can be. We were very fortunate this year and I think, you know, did a good job of working through a budget and the budget process and actually came in well under the spending cap, about $1.1 billion, I believe, under the spending cap, while preserving the $11 million rainy day fund. So we feel like Texas, the economy in Texas has been running well. We are enjoying good times in Texas, financially, fiscally good times in Texas as compared to a lot of the rest of the country. And so we're very fortunate here. We're very blessed to live in Texas. And part of that is the ability to pass a good budget and a good, fiscally sound, balanced budget. One of the things we talked about a lot before the session was border security. I know many of you shared concerns with me about border security, and I had concerns as well. Feel like we did a good job of addressing border security. We passed a bill that appropriates $840 million for border security to secure the border. This will fund about 250 new DPS troopers to work on the border, as well as providing security cameras and aircraft and all that's involved in securing that border. And this will continue to fight against human trafficking and all the contraband that we see is coming across the border. So I'm very pleased with that. Public education, of course, is a big thing throughout the state. As you know, it's certainly something that is near and dear to me and something that I certainly put emphasis on. We were able to fund student growth for public education. You may not be aware that public education, our school system in this state is growing by 80,000 students per year. Think about that, 80,000 students per year. And I know some think, well, they're all coming across the border. Well, they're coming across the border from Oklahoma and Arkansas and Louisiana and New Mexico. I mean, people are moving to Texas. And it's because we have such a robust economy, such a good business climate here in Texas, people are moving here. They're bringing their kids, they're putting them in school here. And that's a good thing. But it is important that we fund them. And so we were able to fund growth in public schools and then another $1.6 billion for other funding needs for public schools. Of course, we have the Supreme Court case right now on our school funding. They are scheduled to take oral argument in September, and we will be waiting for a decision from them. And of course, then legislature will act accordingly depending on what that decision is. Talked to a few of you about the teacher retirement system. When we went to Austin, we were very concerned about teacher retirement system. Teacher retirement system, especially the insurance side of TRS Care was looking at over the biennium about a $1 billion hope that had to be filled. And we were able to take care of that. We appropriated $768 million funded the shortfall and then an additional $1.3 billion for the TRS Care. But I want to remind those of you, remind all of you in particular, but those of you who are in the retired system, that this is just a two-year fix. When we go back to Austin next time, we're going to be facing the same situation. There will be some, a lot of interim study done between now and then. We hope there will be some good solutions to this issue. And when we go back for the next session, hopefully we will have some excellent proposals on the table that will take care and permanently fix our TRS system. And that certainly be the goal. But I want to encourage those of you who are involved in that system and who have family members involved in that system, this is not the time to let your guard down. We were able to buy two years. And part of the reason that, you know, a lot of people say, well, you kicked the can down the road. But a lot of the reason, thinking behind that was healthcare in this nation is changing daily. And to fix something today and think it's still going to be fixed two years from now is really, you know, kind of a dream. And so as Affordable Care Act is fully implemented and all of that, healthcare is changing. And so hopefully this will buy us two years to get a little more of that behind us. We'll have a little better idea of where we stand when we go back and can make better decisions and truly fix a system for so many important Texans. I know I'm not alone in this group, and I can think of some teachers who are really responsible for me enjoying the life I enjoy. And I suspect that everyone in this room can say that. And I think we owe those teachers a decent living, something above the poverty level as they age and as they are retiring. So I look forward to working on that. Higher education, our four-year institutions, we were able to fund tuition revenue bonds for our higher education, four-year institutions. Through that, A&amp;M Texaco will receive a $32 million tuition revenue bond for construction of a building there as an academic and student service building. It's going to provide crucial classroom, laboratory, and office space to fund, to continue to accommodate their growth down there. They are growing. We're excited about what A&amp;M Texaco brings to this region. And we're excited to see them grow. And feel really good about being able to, that building and maybe one other building are really becoming the university that we all dreamed that they would be. And so we're getting very close with them and looking forward to seeing them continue to grow. We were also able to fund a couple of really good programs there at A&amp;M Texaco. They will now be able to offer, rather than just in their nursing program, rather than just a two-year degree or a registered nursing, they will be able to offer a four-year PSN degree. They will be expanding that. As you know, healthcare continues to be a huge issue, and especially for those of us here in rural Texas, healthcare is huge. And one thing we were able to do this time on funding for higher ed was funding the medical education. You know, I didn't really think about it, but we didn't have enough residency slots here in Texas for all of the, for near all of the students who were graduating out of our medical schools. What happens is we are educating them. The state of Texas is underwriting their education in our state schools, but we can't provide internships for them. And so they're going out of state to do their internships. And guess what? They're staying out of state. They're not coming back. So we were able to fund a significant increase to our graduate medical education program and provide internships for those students. Feel really good about that. So again, it's not just about providing money to education institutions, it's about providing opportunities for Texans. And it's about providing opportunities for those of us in rural Texas to have good healthcare, to have good education opportunities, to have an opportunity for higher ed without having to go five hours across the state. So I think that was really important, and we were really pleased with that. Community colleges, we're very honest with you. We were not able to do nearly what I would like for us to have been able to do with community colleges. Community colleges received just a modest increase. We were able to secure some help for them on their, on a regional network that they call NetNet that provides services for them on a regional basis, distance learning. And we're looking at, they are looking at being able to expand even their administrative software. And really, I've been told by some of our community college presidents that if we can get that done, that each community college has the potential to save a million dollars per year, just in administrative cost of the software that does that. So, you know, again, it's not about throwing money at a problem, it's about finding a solution. And I believe that's what we're doing. And so I look forward to working with our community colleges. We have two in House District 1, Texaco College and Parrish Junior College. And we're very fortunate to have those opportunities here in House District 1. Mentioned transportation. Again, before I went to Austin, transportation was one of the real issues that I heard a lot about everywhere I went. Were very concerned about our transportation situation. I heard from some that came from Texaco today said they sat on I-30 for a long time. Heard from some that came from Mount Pleasant today, they said they sat on I-30 for a long time. Heard from one that came from D.C., she said she sat on I-82 for a long time. So we know that we have transportation issues. And part of it is from construction. And that's, you know, it's a good thing we're able to, hopefully this construction is going to, you know, improve our transportation systems. But we know throughout the state that our transportation system has been allowed to get in poor condition. We have not invested in transportation as we probably should have. And so we're a little bit, I relate it to being a school superintendent, if you miss a couple of years buying buses, you can never catch up. You can never catch up because buses are wearing out every year. And so it's a little bit like that when you talk about investing in our transportation system. If you get behind, it's really, really hard to catch up. Hopefully, we're going to do that. We have introduced legislation, passed legislation that will eliminate diversions. Money that's collected for transportation will no longer be diverted to other uses. It will be used for transportation as it was intended, and I think that's a good thing. There will also be a constitutional amendment on the ballot in November that you'll have an opportunity to throw down. It will provide another $2, $2.5 billion on transportation. And again, it's an investment in the future. You vote the way you want to vote. The opportunity has been placed on the ballot for you.
That's the question with non-new taxes.
I'm sorry?
That's the question with non-new taxes.
That's right. No increase in taxes to get that done. It's a sales tax, a dedication of motor fuel tax, existing taxes that will do that. So again, you know, we think about, I think about, especially, you know, making trips to Austin, I think about all the construction on I-35. But I think most of us here in Northeast Texas realize transportation is huge for Northeast Texas. Maybe even a bigger issue than up and down the either of our border. Because of the potential to grow this economy and grow our area, if we can, if we can get I-69 through, you know, if we can do the things that are being planned and that we're looking at, again, that is going to be a real key to bringing jobs to this area. And so I'm excited that that's on the ballot. And I'm going to try to tell you how to vote, but we will, as I said, we'll be sending out some information that you can use to educate yourself. And again, with the influx of citizens coming into Texas, unless we invest in transportation, it's only going to get worse. It's not something that's going to fix itself. There will be another constitutional amendment on the ballot for increased home set exemption. This will raise the home set exemption from 15,000 to 25,000, and it will be retroactive to the 2015 tax year. This is one piece of the tax reduction that we passed. The other piece was the margins tax that was reduced. And so I'm very excited about that. I think tax relief is always a good thing, and I'm excited that we're able to provide tax relief. But I do want to, I want to give you one little warning on our tax relief. A few years ago, maybe 2006, somewhere along in there, legislature passed property tax relief. And I don't know about you, people I heard from really didn't see a lot of relief in their property taxes and because of increasing values. So while the state has the ability and has the authority to pass an increased home set exemption, the state does not say to property values. And there was some discussion that, you know, we're trying to give tax relief to a tax that we really don't control. And there's a lot of truth to that. Again, I'm not saying that I wish we did not provide the tax relief. I'm pleased that we were able to provide a tax relief. But I think you need to be aware that your values can go up, and you may or may not see a great reduction in your tax bill. I've been telling people, I can't promise you that your tax bill will be less than it was last time, but if this home set exemption increase is passed, I can promise you that your tax bill will be less than it would have been had we not passed the home set exemption. So that opportunity is there. Again, that will be on the ballot. You can make those decisions to approve that home set exemption increase or not. Expansion of pre-K, we were able to pass House Bill 4 that calls for an expanded high-quality pre-K. Very excited about that. Again, this does not expand pre-K, it does not increase the eligibility for pre-K, but it is a grant program that schools who want to implement a high-quality pre-K program can qualify for up to $1,500 per student to offer either an enhanced pre-K program, an expanded day pre-K program, whatever it takes to have the high-quality pre-K program. There will be, of course, reporting requirements with that and so that the state can monitor the high-quality pre-K program. House Bill 2804 was a bill that did a lot for our public ed. It continues to build on House Bill 5 from the last session. It increases, it decreases the emphasis on state mandated tests and the impact they have on students, instruction time, teachers' ability to really teach, teach deeply in the subject. So hopefully we're going to, that will continue to get better. It also brings in what some would say is improved accountability for our public schools. We will see a rating standard of A, B, C, D, and F, kind of like you see on your student's report card when they come home. That will be implemented, but it's changing a lot of the data that goes into that accountability system, making that accountability system more robust. So we look forward to the implementation of that. And then one, another issue that I think received a lot of press and I got a lot of feedback on was open carry. We were able to pass House Bill 910 that allows a person who is a licensed concealed carry person, they can become a licensed, they will become a licensed open carry. They can, they can carry openly a holster handgun if they are licensed. Again, it will still be very much like the concealed carry program where there will be gun-free zones. You may or may not have your opinion on those. That's not for me to say. I'm just telling you that the law allows for gun-free zones, just as it did with the concealed carry. And so this becomes effective January 1st. You will be able to openly carry after January 1st if you are licensed and if you have a holster handgun. I was able to, I filed 12 bills. As you might imagine, a lot of mine had to do with public ed. I was very pleased with the number of bills that I was able to either get through on their own or get through as a Senate companion. Or there were a couple of my bills that were not, we were not able to move, that we were able to catch a ride on another bill, we were able to amend the language onto another bill. And I say all that to say this, one thing I've learned about that process is if it's important to you that you have your name on something, you're not nearly as likely to be able to deliver something back to the district. Because when you get down there, you realize that it really doesn't matter whose name's on it as long as the language gets passed and passing the law. And so having my name on it was not the priority. The priority was getting the language passed so that we can improve public education and we can improve systems here in Northeast Texas. I will tell you about a couple of things here in Bowie County that we were able to pass bills for. The, trying to find the bill number. House Bill 2280 was a bill that created a healthcare provider participation program. We worked very closely with Bowie County Commissioners Court, Judge Carlo. Judge Carlo came down and testified on the, no, he testified on his merit. We had a letter from Judge Carlo on this bill in support of it. What this does, it allows the county to set up, become fiscal agent so that the hospitals in Bowie County can draw down federal funds and it opens up a funding stream that has been closed to Bowie County hospitals and to Bowie County. And so, you know, again, going to be a great opportunity as we partner with the hospitals, partner with the county, and work together to bring in federal money into Bowie County. We've just been missing out on it. And so we were very pleased to be able to get 2280 passed and get that language passed. I mentioned TexAmerica Center. Judge Carlo again was, he came down to testify on this bill. We were able to get legislation passed that allows TexAmerica Center to create a nonprofit. And by creating this nonprofit, they're able to lease out those bunkers that are out on that property, the old ammunition storage bunkers. They couldn't do that without this because it would, it would put the entire TexAmerica Center at risk if something should happen. So doing a nonprofit as we're able to do here is going to protect TexAmerica Center, it's going to allow them to lease those bunkers out. And again, it's going to bring dollars into the local economy. And as I understand, they already have, they already have lease agreements, contracts on a lot of those bunkers and, you know, valued at several thousand dollars, you know, that it's going to bring in. And that's money that's going to go directly in to continue to develop that area. And again, just good for the local economy. And of course, we were able to introduce the tuition revenue bond language for A&amp;M Texaco. Very pleased that we were able to get that done. Couple of local issues that we worked on this time and again, I just can't say enough for the cooperation that we had here in the county. Of course, we were, played a small part in helping to get Governor Abbott to declare us a disaster area with the flooding on Red River. I hate to even mention flooding on Red River because I was in Austin, I can't say it's happening at a great time, but I was in Austin while Judge Carlo and our commissioners were out on Red River and working to protect Bowie County from the flooding. And they did just a super job and just very fortunate that they were on top of things and that they were able to get that levy to hold. I had an opportunity to drive out and look at it. It was amazing. If you didn't get to see it, you really, you know, it was very, you know, very impressive what they were able to do. And just very fortunate, very blessed that those levies held and that we didn't see the devastation that we could have seen. So happy that my office was able to work with them in a small way on that. Another issue that we probably played a little larger role in was the facility out at Maule. I don't know if you are aware or not that there was a facility going to come in out there where the state was going to house violent sex offenders in Maule. And we were able to, fortunately, again, my staff was able to contact the right people. We were able to get them in the office and we were able to get that thing shut down. And so very fortunate that that worked out like it did. It's been, it's been a great session, it's been an awesome opportunity. I can't thank you enough for allowing me to serve in this capacity. I just, I mentioned one earlier that I just almost have to pinch myself to realize that I have this opportunity. I'm just, I truly am one of the luckiest guys alive to have this opportunity to serve in this way. And I thank you for that opportunity. And I want to continue to be of service even though we're not in session. There's a lot of business that takes place while the legislature is not in session. So I urge you to stay in contact with us, stay in contact with this office or the one in Austin, and let us know how we can help you and what we can do to serve House District 1 and to serve here in Bowie County. 1 and to serve here in Bowie County. And with that, I'm going to do probably the scariest thing I've done. I'm going to open it up for questions and allow you to ask questions or make comments. Yes, sir, Mr. Pinkel?
Let me try it first, Dr. Van Dever. Appreciate your service to our county. We're faced here in New Boston with a pressing problem. We certainly need your help. We appealed to Sandra L. Tyler's office and he didn't even have the country's address. Concerns, I'm going to shoot two things at you. Concerns the local landfill here. Waste management has applied for extension to increase the landfill out there. There's some issues within landfill that need to be addressed really good by an unbiased party. We don't feel, the citizens here don't feel that the governing bodies are unbiased. The Texas Quality Water Board and the group in Tyler, I forget the exact name of them. There are some issues that's really got to be looked at honestly here. I won't try to go into all of them, but they're up for a, what is it? Another, how many years, how many, 40? They're up for a 40-year, we know them. The hearing's going to be held here in New Boston, September the 14th through the 20th. We actually feel it's a full-blown conclusion that it's going to be done. I don't know how many thousand tons. To make a long story short, we need help from somebody to at least take an honest look at our landfill. We have become the, you know, Sunskoo version of it, the armpit of the state, you know. They bring trash dumped in from everywhere, waste management, we've all seen their ads on the TV about the little green frogs and the people, kids out there at night. They're very good at PR. They are very good at PR and none of that is true. They say they know the origination of every trash. That's out in our life. I can take anything out there I want. You can too. You're never stopped at the gate. You're never checked in the pit. You pull up there, and we've actually had dead bodies thrown out there. You pull up there and they're so backed up that just as soon as you get the trash off the trailer, a bulldozer right behind you covering it up. I've never been asked for a ledger or a foreign origin nation bill later. I've never been checked going in, going out. I've never seen anybody checked going in and going out. So, sir, to make a long story short, this is very critical to New Boston. We're absorbing trash from Red River Army Depot and lower knows where all this. I understand from Mr. Jamie Morris that we're actually setting over one of the major water aquifers in the state. Is that right?
Two.
Two of them. I guess I could point to be arguing, but the point is we have a group that hasn't received a whole lot of help from anybody. In combination with that, I'd like to ask you, Marvin Nichols, what do you, we got to help water, we have got to help water. This is all combined credit. Because if the groundwater gets contaminated, we out of business. Then if the lake water gets contaminated, we sure enough out of business. So briefly, we're asking, the group here in Boston is asking for any kind of assistance, just anything you can throw at us. For the sake and not only for aesthetic beauty, but for the very health hazards that was going on out there. And also the Marvin Nichols, of course, I know that, that bomb's been chewed around a long time and it probably will be. But quite briefly, what is your opinion on Marvin Nichols? If you have any, you probably don't have any. I don't know if you have any put as a senator or not, I mean, I don't know. But if you do, we appreciate it. You know, and other than that, you know, there shouldn't be some kind of, we have water districts in Texas, we have counties in Texas, why can't we have a waste district in Texas? You know, let the, we have no business taking care of Freeport, Louisiana's trash. Anyway, sorry it takes so long, but that's the point.
Yep, I appreciate your comments and your concerns. And I will say this, you know, as far as waste management, certainly, you know, I and my office will certainly be, be happy to contact agencies and put you guys in contact with agencies, you know, the state agencies, you know, that are involved in this. And again, I'm certainly not trying to brush you off at all. I understand the seriousness of this, but I will say this, that truly is a local decision that, you know, the waste management situation is, is really taken care of by the local governments. And that's really where, you know, where your representation is. Again, it's overseen, there are state agencies, TCQ, it's a primary state agency that's involved in that. And, you know, certainly my office can, can certainly contact them and make sure that, you know, the main thing is, I think we want to be sure that, that all laws are followed, all regulations are met and, you know, the environment is protected to the highest degree possible, but...
Yes, sir, we understand that. The laws are being, as they stand now, the laws are being followed to a T. That's the truth. They wrote the laws, waste management wrote the laws, so you know, they're not, they're not disobeying the laws, sir. They're not disobeying the laws.
Okay. Well, again, you know, I certainly will, will, you know, dedicate my office to helping in any way we can. Again, you know, pretty much whatever help we can be will be, you know, coordinating with other agencies.
Okay, appreciate it.
And in response to Marvin Nichols' question, you're right, that bomb hasn't been chewed many times and for a long time and will continue to be chewed. And I think the, my, my position on that is I would like to be, I would like us, Northeast Texas, to be one of them chewing the bomb. I think it's important that, that we keep a seat at that table, that we have our voices heard when decisions are made. You know, I've had people try to paint me as pro Marvin Nichols and I try to tell everyone I am not pro Marvin Nichols, I am pro water. I think, I think we have to address our water needs in this state. I think with us or without us, those needs are going to be addressed. And I think it's just important that, that we be a part of that process. And so, you know, that's really...
You know, I actually made a point during all this rain, I was going to Mount Pleasant and I seen all that water going down the river. I said, we need to save some of that water. Some out of the other.
Yeah, that, that's the thing. I mean, you know, obviously the, you know, the, the real concern is with the local landowners and, you know, the possibility of losing land, you know, where the waters have pounded. But the reality is, the state of Texas needs water and we have millions of gallons flowing right through here every year that's leaving here. When it gets into the Red, it's no longer captureable by us. And so the state of Texas, unless desalination really advances, and there have been a lot of advances in that process, but unless that is the answer, that water's going to have to be captured at some point and in some location. I don't know where...
I agree with you, but the point is the, the existing lake has the, has the all the waste backed up. They already have the facilities, so it looks like you could just develop what you've already got. I'm just a shock.
And maybe some. And if that's, if that can be done, I think...
I appreciate it.
That would be good. Very good. Any other questions?
Regarding transportation. And I know you can't fix this right now, but I'd like you to start working on it.
Sure.
I live north of I-30. My grandson goes to Texas High South of I-30. He can walk from school to my house in less time than I can go down and pick him up because his principal says I can only pick him up in one place and I gotta wait 15 minutes and I do what his principal asks me to do. It is absolutely life-threatening for anybody at that bridge, anyone in Texarkana, anyone in Mount Pleasant, for a pedestrian or bicyclist to cross that. And there is no safe way to get from one side of I-30 to the other. Absolutely not. I worked for the federal government for 32 years. We would not ever allow one of our projects, except DOT somehow got able to build those ridges without providing pedestrian access. And that is wrong. And I would like to find out what it's going to take to improve that and make, you know, protect our people and allow bicycling. I have another concern about that. The Department of Public Safety Office in Texarkana is north of I-30. I don't know if you've ever been there. I had to call Austin and wait on the phone 30 minutes to get directions there. Nobody knew where it was. And you cannot get there without a car. I have been working with people because Texas passed the most restrictive photo ID requirements for voting in the nation. And I, you know, I won't bore you with all the people I've worked with that have voted for years and cannot get a photo ID now. But they for sure can't get one if they don't own a car and they don't have a driver's license and there is no way to get to the Department of Public Safety unless you are in a car. I cannot prove it. It wasn't delivered, but that's a civil rights issue and it certainly looks like the intention was to keep poor minority people who live on the south side of I-30 from being able to vote. And then I found out when it went out there, the workforce office is very close to DPS. And I've met college students and people who live down in the south part of town. You're telling me the state of Texas has no interest in helping them get employment because they cannot get to the workforce office if they do not have a car? That is also wrong. So I want to leave you with some information that maybe your staff could check out and could get back to me and the groups I work with.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
I'm not really the designated person for this, but I'm glad that you mentioned the violent sex offenders in Maude. That group, that population of people under Senate Bill 746 has, as you voted on, passed a $3 million budget to house those men by September 1st. The RFP was issued in June, late June. It closed last Friday. I contacted Mr. and Ms. McLean, who is the director of that program, and it, she is not able to disclose who won that award. She was however able to advise me, which numerous of us have contacted your office as well as our other representatives to try to get a red answer on whether Bowie County is going to be housing these violent sex offenders that have since been reclassified and will basically be in a halfway, halfway house program, living and working in this community. I don't know that there's anything that we can do to stop them. They exist and somewhere in the state is going to get them. I have tried to get through your office as well as our other representative's office and answer as to whether we are the chosen ones. And I have not gotten a reply that answers that question. On Friday and as early as today, I have been in contact with Ms. McLean who still says that because the award has not been announced, she is not able to comment on who applied for the, for the property, who applied for the housing applications through the RFP and who was awarded one or more of those contracts. It's a $13 million contract for roughly 300 people. It is a huge sum of money. There are no licensing requirements, there are no jail requirements. These are citizens that will be in our community. We have a concern in Maude, we do not have a police force. It's the same issues that you dealt with in February with us. However, the restrictions for that population of men have been drastically lessened. They will be exiting the program through a five-step program and we would like, if you know that information, she assures me that you would have been advised whether anyone had offered up a facility in your district.
Yes, and I believe we would have been advised.
Right here.
Sure, sorry.
And as well as you should be able to find out who in Texas is the lucky prize winner. We've not been contacted.
We, our office has not been contacted. And I really don't, I think she's right when she says that we would not know until, until the award.
You would have had to have, with the RFP, you would have had a 30-day prior notice.
If it were in our, if there was one in our district, we would have been notified. But the fact that we have not been notified is an indication that there is not one in our district.
Just like with the Maude facility, the plan earlier in the year, they notified us that they were looking at that facility. So as far as my knowledge, no, we've not been contacted.
Well, when we sought the directive from our elected officials to find out who knew about the property, your office indicated that you had not been notified.
As far as we know.
We haven't on this, no.
The prior...
Come in on prior. We were notified?
We were notified, but there was an issue because the Katz County probation department sent a certified letter to the previous state representative and it was right at the time when Dr. Van Dever was being sworn in. And so that certified letter did not make it to us until the end of January. And so once we were notified the end of January by Ms. McLean's, Ms. McLean's, by sex offender department, then Dr. Van Dever asked her to come over and we talked about it and he said, I don't know.
Well, that was by late February, February the 22nd.
Yeah, that was that whole timeframe when all that was going on.
I think, I think that...
We need to know, I mean, I guess basically the point is, is the group that, the residents that we, that I have contact with, we don't want that. We don't want anything like that. There's another RFP that's coming down for, to house indigent inmates and I do want to make you aware of that. It's an RFP that's going to close very soon. It's about 300 inmates. They're coming down and they're indigent, they have no place to go. They will also fall under the burden of the county to...
It's my understanding that facility has sold and is that correct? Is that facility in Maude sold?
Yes. We don't know what their plans are, is it kind of a rush?
We can't find out any information about the real thing. They're, they're saying that it's a church, which is a church or institution that is haunted in conjunction with two private individuals in the state of Texas that live in Texarkana around the area, but...
The people in there, in that area just want some answers. They want to know what's happening instead of having this fear every day waking up, seeing the activity and wondering what's happening there.
I think, again, you know, I think we can, at this point, I think we can feel very confident saying that they are not being considered for this program. Now, what they're doing, we have no idea. You know, probably cannot find out, you know, unless they're doing something illegal or, or trying to...
They'll be all government contracts for their funding. They paid $2.3 million for the facility. The utilities on that facility run about $5,000 to $6,000. I inquired about buying the facility after the sale, which I don't ever see, I don't ever, I can't find where the building was even posted for sale. So in the time span between March, when the deal was killed with the sex offender proposal that was coming out here prior, and June 1st, when the deed was filed with this clerk's office, it has been posted, marketed, and sold. And when I, we tried to buy it ahead of time, before all of this, and it was not for sale for Katz County. But now it is sold and I believe Katz County is holding a note on installment payments waiting for some sort of government funding program to house up to 300 people there. That's a third of the town of Maude.
Right.
And criminals, exiting the criminal justice system.
You know, I mean, I don't know that, unless they apply for a contract, you know, or bid on a contract, I don't know that we would have any way of knowing what they're...
We can, we can... Any contracts, now wouldn't state contracts that that building, facility would qualify for?
I mean, it's, it's a prison type... I mean, it's, it's a prison type facility, so...
It's not good.
Well, but I mean, it was a offender, it was a juvenile, what, juvenile justice program for...
What was it for?
It was a restitution center back in nineteen ninety-five.
It was drug, you know, drug offenders. Right. And so, um, it, it's designed in such a way that it can be retrofitted for a variety of populations. So, we'll just have to get on the phone and make some phone calls and find out.
That's what we've been asking.
Okay. Let me give you this card.
I have this.
You have?
Yes, I've been contacted.
Well, that, that is Trish's card.
Oh, your card. Thank you.
Yes.
But I think, I appreciate you taking the time and, uh, helping us out in February. Uh, we, we want you to clearly understand that we do not want that population in there.
Absolutely. And I fully agree and, and I'm committed to doing whatever we can.
But somebody in Texas is going to be the prosecutor.
That's true. That's true.
I hope they're in the middle of a desert in West Texas.
And I appreciate you funding, hopefully go far away.
Well, and, and, you know, when Ms. McLean's in the office, I, I have to admit that, that I, I felt sorry for her because she had a job to do and, and there are people that need to be housed somewhere. They don't need to just be turned out. But, you know, where, where to house them is...
Well, you know, international relations in Mexico will put people...
That, that might be, that might be good.
What I'm doing right back contract, go right back to the dump. You gotta have dump down somewhere, but, you know, we don't want to hear.
Right. I don't want to all be here.
The, the facility was originally built for, for juvenile offenders and it was built in an area that was designed to take juvenile offenders. But that little small community out there with houses with a stone's throw of it, it's not a good area for this type of fit, whether it be violent sex offenders or whether it be violent criminals that are being released and put into circulation. So, it's just not a good fit. It would be a good fit for maybe juvenile drug rehabilitation or something like that because there is a need for that as you were... But I don't know.
Hopefully you can find a better, better positive use for that. They have also filed for tax relief, so there will be no school, no property, no county taxes if that, if that passes.
As their indigent inmates going into the program is going to be overburdened, the county will provide medical support, uh...
What...
Legal, legal support, that thing.
Local taxing entities would have to be the one to grant the tax exemption, so...
They would want, and they will qualify because they're 501(c) through the church and they also developed a nonprofit organization. And all this has happened, uh, all these entities have no experience with this. They've all been created since September of two thousand and fourteen. So, it's sort of a very, they, the same entity has also purchased the dry cleaners in town in the Texarkana and their intentions are to work them through the dry cleaning. I happen to own a drop point or at one point in time owned a drop point and all this information was relayed to me from the owner wishing to purchase my dry cleaners, drop them on. So, it's a tightly, it's a, it's a subject that no one really wants to talk about, but we want you to know that we do not want it in Maude.
And, and I share that and let me, let me just encourage you to, to give Trish...
I have lots of information.
Give her your information and we will do everything we can to, to, you know, find out what's going on, you know, and we'll...
It can be our eyes and ears.
What's that?
It can be our eyes, our voice and our ears.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Thank you.
We'll do that. Others? Okay. Well, again, I, I, our crowd is quick on some of that. Everybody gets more goodies. Get yourself, again, thank you for coming out in here and, uh, thank you for, uh, working with us and we look forward to working with you.